All right, I have seven o'clock. Okay, so we'll call the meeting of the Farmington planning board to order and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, emergency exits for anyone that hasn't been here before is over here in this corner and then the one you came in. There is a generator in case there is a power outage and we'll go from there. Because we don't have sign-in sheets yet, right Tom?
No.
Okay, so please make sure you say your name and everything beforehand. Please all pay your cell phones, smartwatches and all those good things, mute them so we don't get interrupted. The board will be following rules of procedure stopped by this board on January twentieth of twenty twenty-one and Department of Down Board Resolution number three twenty-six of twenty twenty regarding remote attendance of members since we have Tim DeLucia is in remote via Zoom. Welcome, Tim.
Thank you.
But Tim's with us on Zoom, everybody else is here, we have a full staff. Next item up is approval of the four minutes from the last meeting, everybody get a chance to read them. Anybody have any issues? Do I have someone to rec or to move approval? Some move agents, I can advise. Chauncey, any other comments? All in favor, six and five are saying aye.
Aye.
All right, so we're good with the minutes, no legal notices, we have order of business. We have three final site plans, first one up is PB zero six zero two dash twenty-one. Final site plan approval for the deep police development. Who do we have here to present?
Edward G. Farrell.
All right, welcome.
Edward Engineering, good evening, Mr. Andrew, beginning to tell the planning board the story. I think John knows our address and knows where we live and I'll get right into it. We are proposing this evening a forty-two, forty-three hundred square foot retail store combination ice cream parlor and beauty salon for this proposed lot seventy-two, which is part of the overall Redfield Grove incentive zone project that was approved some four or five years ago now. And this is actually part of what was base two, this land was subdivided. It's part of base two, which is still under construction today. The lot is as was described in the rezoning or the incentive zoning roughly three quarters, a little more than three quarters of an acre of land. And it also has a variety of conditions that this plan does reflect and does agree with. Along with that, we did try to bring the building a little bit closer based on respecting what the town has instituted out of ninety-six corridor plan that's now been adopted. And I'll get into that in a minute. As I said, the building is forty-three hundred square feet, it'll be evenly divided. The what called the southern end of the building will in fact be for the ice cream facility and the northern end will be for the beauty salon. There is a patio enclosed, not enclosed, but open air patio that will be utilized for the ice cream facility. We did provide, and I think Frank, our client was with us this evening, Mr. Frank, the police and also along with us tonight is the prospective tenant for the ice cream parlor as well as for the the beauty salon. In addition to that, we are providing site landscaping, this is the landscaping plan that will be at dumpster located on the northern end and it will be enclosed. We are proposing, we did say that we were proposing an eight-foot fence, Frank would like to make that modification to a six-foot high board fence. And the six-foot high board fence would only go up to a forty-foot setback. Based on the requirements in the commercial retail area, you cannot build a fence more than four feet in height in the front setback area. So for forty feet back, we're proposing a six-foot high fence and I'm not sure that we will be parried for that because I believe it's provided in the code in your coordinate as it relates to section one sixty-six dash sixty-one for fences. In addition to that, we will be providing site lighting. And I'll get into this lighting issue as it relates in the amenities along the roadway. Our landscape architect went through the entire ninety-six corridor master plan, we are providing a part fence, we are providing three of the luminaires that are outlined in that specification. We're going to coordinate with Lance as it relates to the exact specific requirement for that because it doesn't tell you and Lance is going to provide that to us. This type of fixture, it's a little bit different than the fixtures that are going to be utilized for this particular of the site itself. They will all be dark sky compliant, they will be down casting in all situations. And we have are providing forty-seven parking spaces. As far as utilities are concerned, we're available. There will be a water service from the building, this building will not be sprinkled. This building will in fact require a heck load for better. We did discuss this at the DRC meeting and Frank, who have clearly decided at this point in time that the code doesn't need to be sprinkled, be considered a cost implication, he felt that it was better to have to sprinkle it at this point in time. As far as storm drainage is concerned of the detailed plans, drainage will be collected. It will be collected in the coal system and will discharged to the existing storm source system that carries the stormwater not only for this property, but the adjoining properties all the way down versus drive, ultimately discharging it to the large stormwater management. As you know, there's two large stormwater management facilities going to the north. This will discharge it to the first one. And as far as green infrastructure is concerned, we are going to provide green infrastructure. Lance and I have had a conversation relative to that. And for our green infrastructure, we're probably going to, in fact, I know we're going to be using drywalls in this area because of the site constraints. Now, one other good thing that we felt that is good as far as linkage is concerned for people. I might, I do want to point out to the board and some of the board members were not on the board at the time when this was approved. A sidewalk was constructed all the way as part of base two, all the way along the, we'll call it the east side of commercial drive two ninety-six system. We are also providing, as I said, sidewalks around three quarters of the building, actually the four sides of the building and this connecting link here to ninety-six. So I know that there's a proposed draft resolution and we feel that this accomplishes what is necessary for this particular build. I know that there was a discussion or one of the comments relative to the, to the proposed draft resolution that a sidewalk be constructed along commercial drive to the drive and then a sidewalk that would enter into the center area. We feel that that's very redundant, there's no room for storage of snow here. It's a little bit more difficult to construct the sidewalk in this particular area, just not enough room. And we feel we've accomplished it doing this, okay? Plus the fact that we have the sidewalk here. So from a connectivity standpoint, a sidewalk, crosswalk can be provided here for folks that are coming from this area as well as people that may be coming from the west, they can enter from a pedestrian standpoint, I think there's enough circulation. Furthermore, the sidewalk basically will end. There are no sidewalks, there will not be any sidewalks on the west side, so in our opinion, this is really a bent sidewalk that's not really necessary in our opinion and we accomplish it doing this way. There was one other comment relative to this and I can go into the draft resolution. As it relates to the bump out, this bump out, I think was, this is not a driveway for these two end vehicles to actually negotiate backing out. And either way, we need this, we call it a little relitment. We need that, this is not intended to be a driveway exception to the hotel. And the reason is, is because there's a grade change here that we can't accomplish. We were hoping to make a sidewalk connection this way, but the grade doesn't afford us to do that. That's why we provided the sidewalk here. Because if there are potential people that want to get to the ice cream facility or even for that matter to the beauty salon, that they can come through their parking lot, hit this sidewalk and then actually enter the building. So we think from a circulation standpoint from the sidewalk, if we accomplish that, okay? So with that being said, if I could, and I think hopefully the board has a has copies of the resolution and I, I can either close now or we can review the, the various proposed.
Let's do that.
Let's do it that way, so I'll conclude it and certainly.
We'll do that and then we'll go through that.
That's fine.
Ron, you're up.
Okay, well, first of all, seeker was completed as part of the incentive zoning package price project and therefore seeker is satisfied.
Right.
As far as the issues that Ed has raised tonight, the thought was that people are going to be walking to this facility. And as a result of that, they're not going to walk across the front of the property to the west side, come across and back into the property. I'm trying to figure out a way of separating pedestrian vehicular movements, which we're obligated to do. That's why I recommended the sidewalk along the east side of the property up to the point. And then you use the handicap cross-striping to get across the parking lot to the building. That to me seems like a more direct route. Is it going to, is it going to control? You know, people are going to wander where they want to wander. But people are also going to want to get to the ice cream or the beauty parlor as quickly as they can. And that's why I put the recommendation in there for another crosswalk and extend the building in the middle to accommodate what is the predominant destination for people living east of the city.
Ron, do you want me to respond?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, what I'd like to do then, I would propose this round, but we do have this sidewalk here. Is that we can provide a sidewalk here opposite where the handicap is, a crosswalk across here. And the, the point of the matter is whether we stripe out a parking space for them to walk into here and they can walk to get to this sidewalk across the driveway, that'd be fine. I think we can accomplish that. But I don't see the purpose of extending this sidewalk down here, all the way here and then bring this sidewalk here as I understood the way it was written. And I think that we can accomplish it, we have the existing sidewalk here for the residents. And for them not to walk to here and then walk back, we could provide something here across a small portion of concrete to get to the garden, a crosswalk to get across the street and then another small slab of concrete here to get to that facility.
Then stripe across the parking lot to get in so they pass a little.
We could stripe that too.
Okay.
You know, I, I'm, I think maybe we ought to let the town I would super there. Lay in on this a little bit.
All right, we'll do that when we get done with it. You got anything else, Ron?
No, no, I, I look at, I think that we have a need for both facilities here in town. I hope that both are successful. I know that the Darian was a long time success in this community. And that believing between Ed and I, we could both use beauty supplies.
Yeah, I could really use them a lot, I know. I'll be over tomorrow.
Okay, Dan. All right, my staff with our Marshall and zoning and myself and codes have reviewed this and our concerns were reflected in draft resolution. It does sound like from a zoning point of view, you addressed the concerns with the fence. The other concern that came up was with parking, but we incentive zoning allowed a different parking structure, so that is what we believe is compliant now. Doesn't mean our code, but it's going off a different regulation for the IZ. So for us, we're pretty good at this.
Okay, Highway.
Well, from us. Following up on Ron's conversation about people coming in from the, from the north and east side, that driveway that goes back into the dumpster, what would be the feasibility of coming across, putting the crosswalks across the road just on the north end?
Right here, right here, John, yeah.
North side of that driveway following back and then cut across back out of the line of traffic for pedestrians walking in there.
You mean, put a walk here?
Yeah, crosswalk right there and walk right down that, just inside, just to the south of that fence along there.
Right.
And when you get a little further up, then you cross over to the building right.
Right here, is what you're saying, yeah.
Then you're not bringing pedestrians right straight across the parking lot.
I, that's something we certainly weigh in with our client.
Yeah, we can, we can look at that.
That keeps, that keeps your crosswalk, gets your crosswalk back further away from ninety-six, gets you cross, keeps you out of the parking lot all the way up to a very minimally traffic, traffic traveled area to cross over to the building.
Yes, it does, because this won't, you're right, Don, this will not be utilized at all here, other than when, when the garbage trucks come in to pick it up.
The other thing is we don't want you to lose any person, we've been right on the bubble.
Right, so if we come this way with a sidewalk and then they can just negotiate across here, have a crosswalk coming across here from the side, from the sidewalk on this side of the road. I think that would be a viable solution, Frank. Would be a viable solution.
That's all I have.
Anything else? Lance?
I got his letter.
Got a letter, no, I, I think it's a good plan, we went through the drainage, I don't have any issues related to drainage, so that's a record for us. I think that it looks well, I do need to provide you guys MSOD, street scape stuff, I believe you're compliant, I just.
We are.
We have it.
But I need that spec.
Yeah, I have the light specs, so I'll provide it.
I got them, many of them are light specs.
Yep, I'll provide that to you and then the bench spec in case you need that as well.
These are technical things, but I normally beat him up there for a while, so we'll, we'll get through this.
Yeah, I don't, I, I, as a whole.
They're all technical stuff.
I'm pretty comfortable with the plan this.
Okay. Dan, do you want something else?
Nope. I didn't talk to Lance before he sends that spec.
Okay. All right, so next item up will be the board, Chauncey.
Um, I don't really have anything that I'm not against discussing.
Okay, Adrian.
I have a couple. I'm happy with the sidewalk going by the driveway or whatever, crossing there, because that'll be utilized definitely more by people down the other end of the neighborhoods and stuff with all the sidewalks. And that build, I don't have anything with the plan or everything else layout wise, it looks all right to me. I just had like color and memory and stuff here with pictures. The overhangs over the doors and these pictures show the black and white, is that what we're looking at? Or is that just?
Yes.
The onions, I guess they're called, you know? And why the black and white?
Just to give us some contrast, you know, there's a lot of red in the building and then some tans, so it's a black and white, just to contrast.
Doesn't mean otherwise the colors in the building, the brown and red, I mean, I like the way that all of it is, the onions, I don't know, set out a little different, teeny tiny socks, so.
Can I, Doug?
Just got a couple, but I guess I didn't realize about the onions, they didn't, they bug me too much, are they going to be up in the winter or that's just?
No, they're permanent.
Oh, they are, oh, okay, so it's a, I will type over if they're not.
They're being the canvas.
Okay.
They last.
Okay, all right. The other ones I had, I think you kind of touched on that a little bit as the snow storage, when you kind of looked at utilize some of that area.
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, my, my other concern was if you were utilizing that by that sidewalk, just not block that sidewalk. I don't know, I don't actually put traffic. If there, but that was like kind of a concern I had there. All the landscape, like the adjacent building, are they going to be mulched? You would see that color on the plan, but kind of assumed it would be.
Yeah, we mulch.
And the only other thing I had was just an NCD dumpster, closure of the gates on that, so it's something that would look kind of similar to the board forward. So if those pieces want to pull in, I guess the first thing that's seen they're pulling in, so. I don't know what the type of last forty keys on that, that's.
Well, the gates will, the gates will be in like a vinyl coated with glass, chain tights like that.
Anything like that, okay.
That opens up.
Just in other words, that, that plastic will be inserted in the lattice, it'll be like a lattice.
The rest of it will be wood.
Yeah, it'd be wood or three sides and then the gate itself will be like a, almost like a, it's a chain link fence with a vinyl slab going through it.
Yeah.
So you can't see through it.
So maybe like a brown color or something.
It's a brown, yeah, like a brown color.
It looks kind of like wood.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to do a little more detail on that, that was.
A match color, but it'll be a little more durable than wood. It is.
Well, it was more adaptable, I was too, and that's why with the air scene, a lot of times the wooden ones are having to help your guys on like.
No, I've experienced that a lot.
One other thing, Doug, I would like to point out that you missed, it's in one of the comments relative to the draft resolution, we will provide, there will be stop it lighting in here because there was some question relative to some dark areas, but the stop it lighting, we will, Frank has a fixture that you will develop on the plan. The lighting plan will affect the fixture it is.
Okay, basically, what I do, I put recessed lighting and stop it around the old perimeter of the building. So at nighttime, it does a nice little down cast on the building, it looks really nice. If you notice my buildings on Ampti Uptown, ninety-six on Ampti Drive. My buildings, at nighttime, they all have stop lighting, and that's, that's where I plan on using it.
By the way, lighting is all out of the.
Yeah, exactly. The, I'm just a reminder that you're going to have the stop lighting underneath the patio or which are.
We're going to have some, some lighting under there as well.
Okay, okay. Yeah, it's really heavy having it.
Ron?
Ed, can you just embellish a little bit about the area underneath the patio there for people to sit, eat ice cream?
We, we did provide a document, a few without, we did provide.
Yeah. But it didn't really show the location, I know it showed the walk-up window service, which is, okay, good. But are there going to be tables there or chairs or?
There are going to be like, what, two top tables?
Yes, yes. Two top tables, just, you know, you know, all the folks that want to stand out, sit down and enjoy the.
I like the way you said.
You weren't doing it good up in there.
Yeah, we wanted to make sure Don had something to lean against when he had the big large ice cream cone.
I need a place to sit, like getting her hair done herself, beauty salon, I put a wall front, I ice cream while I wait.
But you and I are not going to the hair spa, you know.
Right down that one.
You got it, I got it, you got it, you did not. I didn't go into those.
I don't know, I see a lot of those husbands sitting out there eating a straight hour at.
There you go.
A good excuse to say there is there.
Tim, what do you got for it?
I do like the plan and I very much like the design of the building, I think it really looks, really looks nice and should fit into that ninety-six corridor very well.
Thank you. Thank you, yeah, my comment that I had was make sure there be extra good outside seating here, you know, how much traffic you'll get, but certainly on more days, you're going to get a number there and people want to sit instead of necessarily sitting in their cars, so that would be good. Let's see. By the way, a little bit of a side note, on the Redfield Grove sign on Hook Road.
Yep.
I was told there's at least one bush there that's dying. Take a quick look at it, it must be on the backside or something of it. Somebody said something to me in passing somewhere along with that and just trying to bring it up, so just check those out, make sure that they're all still viable.
Okay.
No, I had nothing else on this project, I thought everything was pretty good. Did we answer all the questions on the redwood?
I got two, I got one.
All right, we got one more over here.
The fence, yeah, putting in. I don't know, how high, do you know how high the metal fences next door for the Ottoman?
Six.
It is six foot?
It's a six foot high chain.
Because that will still be there as soon as you watch on his land and this one here. But that block, at least it's not higher, so I don't see, it'll block the whole thing.
Yeah, mostly, yes. It's, one of the main reasons of this is because of that.
I get it, and that's, I like that, I mean, that's good, and then you put that up, maybe it looks nicer this way than hide some of that, so. I just want to make sure that his fence will be hiding, that's all.
Doug?
Mine goes, if we have that sidewalk going on the, that door side there.
Yes.
Is it, was that really a one-foot diameter tree you're going to transplant over there? I thought I saw.
Yes, the reason is, is the DOT required that Frank had to replace the tree. And where the tree is, is absolutely hideous where it is because the DOT said put it there. Well, it's right next to the handicap ramp. If you've seen it, it's like a twig that's out there. So what we wanted to do was relocate that back here and I see no problem with being, we're accomplishing what the DOT says, to put it in a more appropriate location. It just was totally inappropriate where it was.
So, but is it really one foot?
No, it's not one foot, it's one, it's an inch, it's an inch and a half, yeah.
All right.
Describers here.
It's one, one, okay, yeah, okay, I was just picturing.
Describers here, right, Tom? Okay.
And that's not.
The buckle will go out of here, I'm going to talk to him later.
I was just trying to figure out how this is going to be the sidewalk.
No, 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 no.
Okay, so what issues do we still have unresolved in the resolution there?
Number eight, I don't think we need to have it in there, that's the strike for home power. I can understand where people thought this was going to be extended here, it's just, that's all it is, is a turnout, a lot of parts are being turned, you're back out.
Is there room to push snow past the sidewalk there or are you going to that hill into the?
Oh, we're to that though.
So you won't be able to really stack snow there.
No, no.
Okay, so eight can go, what other one you got?
Uh, okay, okay.
You addressed the sidewalk, did you, but?
Yes, we did, we're good, the sidewalk issue, I think we have. Number ten, we've already given it to the town. Number, number eleven, and I think maybe that it is a commercial speech sign, I don't know if that's.
What we're saying is you don't have a sign and site going in basically, or any indication of signing.
Right, what we're going to do, and I said this at the DRC meeting, a DRC, my bad. The DRC meeting is that Frank will in fact, there will be signage onto the building, that'll be a separate application to you all.
Okay.
It is not to determine if what the signage will be. So there will not be, there will not be a freestanding side there.
So eleven is okay, there will be a separate site plan, sign tag plan, okay, so eleven's good. But we do need to do some editing of number seven concerning the sidewalk, right, Ron?
Yes. Yes. I think you're okay with that, Ron, because it just, it provides.
That's what the highway superintendent wants, I'm good with it, okay.
I think it's safe, sort of pushing it back there, putting sidewalk.
I'm just trying to figure out that people bringing kids to to get ice cream are not going to walk down longer, rather walk dead.
I'm not walking all the way around.
I know you're not.
I'm cutting across that.
Most people are there to cut through the parking lot. Dan, are you going right across?
I'm going to cut right across the driveway and walk in.
I know you're not.
But now there's sidewalk, I mean, I'm taking my kids down the sidewalks.
Okay.
I'm not walking all the way around.
Okay. The only other thing is, I have a question on number fourteen. I'm unsure why we need a shirt, we said everything, nothing is dedicated. There's no dedicated utilities, there's no sidewalks, we're not dedicated. These are all private, these are private, the one on ninety-six. It's already there.
It's a, it's a.
You know why I put that in there? At the time, I would have taken the sidewalk along that side.
So we don't need fourteen then, right?
There's no letter of credit there.
There's no water, there's no, there's no dedicated.
Nope, nothing.
So here's what we have, resolution to the condition, I have said it is going to change and John, you can reword this, but the sidewalk will be on the north side of the driveway, there'll be a crosswalk. And John, you can reword this, but the sidewalk will be on the north side of the driveway, there'll be a crosswalk from the east to the west.
Step, step it again.
Okay, number seven.
Right.
The sidewalk will be on the north side of the driveway. And then there'll be a crosswalk across commercial to the east sidewalk. Number eight can be deleted and number fourteen can be deleted. Okay, with those conditions, then are you okay with that?
I am absolutely okay with that.
Okay, so, or has heard the conditions, um, I have a motion to waive the reading and approve it with the changes in the condition? Yes, oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
It's only six foot tons.
Six, or six goes to six foot tall or whatever.
They know there's.
If you say extended, let's uh.
Forty foot.
Well, we don't even, we don't even need that anymore because he, he's meaning coke, so we don't even need that in there, you wanna like.
Maybe drawing on your drawings, and eight foot high.
Okay. Okay, so.
Six feet proposed.
Six feet. Along the north property line will not necessitate the need for an area variance.
Do you see him there?
I possibly exist even rate. In other words, you're not gonna bring in two foot.
No, 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 we, right, about six foot high above existing grade.
Six foot and then four foot.
Well, it's gonna be above, it's gonna be a little bit above the ground.
Six inches or something, yeah.
And, but the, the, the front yard will be four foot.
There won't be a fence.
There'll be no fence in the front.
Forty foot seven, there'll be no fence.
Okay.
No front fence.
No need to have front fence.
So number six can change the proposed. Six foot tall, board on board fence along the north property line will not necessitate the need for an area variance.
Sure.
Right?
Then will be set back forty feet. Then, then it ensures that it's gonna be forty.
That's about what the car dealer pays, about forty foot there?
No, he's about thirty-five, so you're gonna see a little bit of his. Can't have, just can't do it.
Just check in.
John, you got that?
I got, I'm not gonna hold it up for you.
The number seven will say, the proposed six foot tall, board on board fence along the north property line will not necessitate the need for an area variance and will be set back forty feet.
Thank you.
Okay.
To Ralph's, the, the drawings should be updated to reflect that detail versus the what this currently I learned.
Well, they have to.
They have to do all that.
All that has, this has to be met before we'll sign any.
Okay.
Okay, so we have conditions, we've changed them, they have a finished agreement to those changes. Do I have someone to waive the, make a motion to waive the reading and approve the resolution with changes to the condition? So move by agents, second by?
Doug?
Any other comments? John, please take a roll call vote.
Nancy Maloney.
Aye.
Doug Dees.
Aye.
Tim Delucia.
Aye.
And Henry.
Aye.
General, thank you very much.
All right, thank you and welcome, and, and all I was gonna say, I was gonna vote no unless you had very nice. All right, that's my dog. I know, I already voted, but. Ron?
Well, we have Frank here.
Uh-oh.
How will I accommodate the removal of those stock files on there, like?
That's right now, I removed, there was some, there was some spoils dumped there, I removed all the debris, all the debris, there was some construction debris there. So all that's left there was just some top soil files. So that's, that, that's from the original, um, my daughter had a permit, was a creative permit.
Yeah, remember we had that total finer strip permit?
Yeah.
That he almost went to jail for. We got him out. Is the planning board happy with that?
I haven't noticed, personally.
Well, I can tell the board at this point in time, we're under contract with country banks.
Right.
Things are gonna, things are changed.
Moving quick.
Well, that's, that's fine, you're country bank, but Frank has an obligation to this board to ensure that those stock files have been removed.
Okay.
And if he's telling the estate, they've been removed.
Yeah, well, that's okay, I'll take a quick look. And you guys, I'll just take a look and make sure that it's okay. If they're not, let, let Frank know, okay?
I mean, I think there was an excavator on there a couple weeks ago, or somebody was doing probably something, but I didn't, I haven't been bothered with it.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you guys, thank you. Have a good one.
Thank you, Justin.
Good luck.
See you, well, thank you.
No problem. Okay, next item up, B P zero four zero one dash twenty, final site plan amendment. This is D S P engineers. And we have Walt with us tonight.
Yes, sir.
How you feeling, you recovered okay or?
Yeah.
Good, glad to hear it. Yeah, yes, it was.
Really came out, it's been a while, you're good.
Yeah. Good, glad to hear it.
Uh, Walt, P A D S P engineers, uh, here tonight on behalf of Anthony DiFranco of the A D Real Estate Development Corporation.
I just missed the end part of the meeting.
Tell Bill to let you call in back.
I forgot to put it on.
At any rate, uh, as we stated in our cover letter.
Yeah.
I'm here tonight regarding the amendment to uh, the map I posted here. Everybody recalls, just to go back in time and not all the way back.
Right.
Started this back in two thousand and four, I believe.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Right, and this is actually the generation from two thousand and fifteen, which the planning board actually signed off on. And uh, there's the eight section, we tried to color it for the wall, but some of the sections ended up with a, uh, yellow. We had a section seven south, a section seven north. And the same thing when we did section six and also section eight. So uh, at this point in time, we're just about done with the puzzle. It's under construction, we did have approval from board back in January, as we stated in our cover letter. And subsequent to that, well, back in two thousand and fifteen, when this map was done. That was back in the day when uh, Ernie after we had an idea, cause there was a cul-de-sac on the original plan at the beginning of the project. And we had a road from section five that was gonna come straight through and ended in a cul-de-sac in this area. So then Ernie had this idea of revising this section, which would be section eight north and seven north. And we made the lots ninety feet wide instead of a hundred feet wide. In turn, we didn't lose any lots, so we had the same number of lots that we were supposed. And give the town an additional four and a half acres of parkland. So made this whole parkland along the northern boundary along the old railroad bed, which is now a trail system. Uh, more usable, so uh, obviously the board approved it back in two thousand and fifteen. And with that, we also had from the beginning of the project, when we first had the parkland that came around, because this was a cul-de-sac area and residential lots. We had a strip of land that was coming out to Ivory Drive that was part of the parkland. And this is a ten eleven feet wide that was going to be obviously dedicated to the town as town parkland. Well, if you look at the county tax max, this was transferred all to the town, but this little finger didn't show up. So when we made the change back then, this was never, we didn't think it was ever filed that way, this little eleven foot strip of land was ever filed with the town. Well, when it's filed with the town, one of the notes to me, Ernie, and I think most of the people that uh were involved. This parkland was dedicated to the town, it also goes to New York State, and it's adopted as a parkland for the town, but it's regulated under the New York State Legislature. So the plan in two thousand and fifteen, removing this cul-de-sac area, taking this strip of land, relocating it over here, so our sidewalk, we could eliminate this road. So we're gonna put a sidewalk from section five where the road could be, bring it across, and we're gonna jog it a little bit. Then bring the sidewalk from, we look at here to here, and also over time with the town staff. Uh, they wanna get, you know, park equipment in there, maintenance equipment for the ponds. Because we have an access here, in all the ponds, we have access points. So it was thought of making it thirty feet wide, so we have a subsurface access mode underneath the sidewalk to the parkland, and this would be a factory walk across here and then jog it right in. Everything would go along fine, fine, it was signed in January, we did the whole deal, filed the wall with the county. And the attorney's got called and said, you wanna move what? Move that from here to here. He needs to basically add a canvas, so he had to go to New York State and get the state legislature to change. A parkland has been filed with New York State, he said that'll take forever. He says, can you do something different? So I scratched my head, looked at the plan, trying to figure out what we could do, and like I said, lots are ninety feet wide. And this turned out to be, this access turned out to be thirty feet wide instead of eleven. So I looked at it and we could take and shift basically this thirty foot strip of land up between lots seven thirty-six and, six, seven thirty-seven, seven thirty-eight, seven thirty-nine. And shift them south if you will, and move the thirty foot access here. We already had sidewalks on the north side of the road. We have a sidewalk coming up through here with a crosswalk coming across, like we already have on all the sections. Bring it in here and then cross over here, but that way you get into the parkland and relocate that. So tonight, we need planning board approval to basically move those three lots and refile section seven. So basically, here it is relocated over, so these three lots are basically here. And here's that strip of land it's talking about, so that trail that's filed with the big piece is still there. And we're gonna add to it, shift these ninety, ninety, ninety right down in the butt section, eight north. Eight north doesn't get affected. This stays the same, that's another story we gotta get into. But we did shift these three lots down and, and give the town a script there, so it's basically, we don't have to deal with New York State. We're gonna turn around and dedicate this other, call it twenty feet to the town for parkland, and then it'll be filed with the state, and then it's really blacked out.
Forever.
Forever. So yeah, so it was kinda like, we were all obviously filed and we were getting the descriptions ready for the attorney to take care of it, and the attorney called me up and said, can you do something different and not this whole job to the staff, because you can't do anything with these lots until such time as it's changed.
Okay.
I understand the whole story there, and then recall back then, even with, when we did the access from section five. We talked back in two thousand and fifteen, because this is a sixty foot right of way. So when we, we changed it back in fifteen, when we laid out the lots for seven and eight. We made it so there was a thirty foot strip here, because we had control over this. So we set this at thirty feet, but the section that came out to the old right of way, or section five right of way, is still a sixty foot area. These lots are already filed, so we ended up with sixty feet, and then that's a watch you fifteen feet to one owner, fifteen feet to the other owner, and we're left with sixty feet, or thirty feet, and we're right in the middle of thirty feet. Well, that wasn't so easy either, I mean, good ideas, you know? So the attorney said, you know, actually, Ron said send a letter to the neighbors, we sent a letter to the neighbor, this one said, sure, I'll take it fifty feet. This guy never responded. But we tried, and talking to the attorneys, they said, this guy, even if both of them said yes. It's gonna affect their current mortgage, their mortgage is based on so many square feet of land in their house, in their assessment and everything. If you turn around and add another piece of land to it, it affects their current mortgage, they're gonna redo everything. And he says it's, it's, you know, it's gonna be a mess for them, they, people don't realize what's involved doing. So the attorney said, what else can you do there? And so, well, we can leave that sixty foot, it'll be turned into grass area, and we're gonna put trees along both sides, so it looks like a demarcation. You know, so it's like a thirty foot strip going through there. And we're gonna take out the radiuses, so we won't have any radiuses, which I'm gonna approve plan back in uh January. And jog that across, bring that straight through, but dedicate this strip, now which is a little out of shape, it's thirty feet here, and it opens up to sixty feet. So we write the description to dedicate that to the town, because it's not part of these lots here, and it's not part of these lots, so it's just a matter of the old area in between them to be dedicated to the town as, man, not parkland.
Okay, no. All right.
That makes sense.
Yeah, we'll turn it over to staff and see what you got, Ron?
Yeah, uh, basically, the uh, uh, resolution that I granted for you tonight requires some modifications to uh, section five, the drawings that were filed. Because those drawings didn't show the sidewalk crossing Amber Drive into location. And then the other part of it is, now that we're bringing the sidewalk across and then heading north along the east side of Ivory Drive, uh, I'm asking for another uh, street light there to, to show, to demarcate the concrete sidewalk going back into the parkland.
And. Were we dislocated? Yeah. Yeah, so we took the, the street light that was here, and relocated it conveniently on this side to the corner in the right way of seven forty.
Yeah, and I, I had called for another street light on the other side. Uh, because I couldn't tell from the lighting plan whether that ramp going up to the sidewalk was gonna be adequately illuminated or not, and I'll leave that up to Don as to whether he wants that. Um, the other thing I did put in there is some staggering of street, of, of, of trees along the, the trail. Back to where you're showing landscaping around the pond and whatnot, with five or six sort of trees.
You know, Tony can work that out.
I am, I know, I know, he'll be, um, he's that in doubt. You know, basically, we, we need to get a revised drawing of section five, because we're taking out any of that asphalt curvature and the gutters and whatnot.
You know, the radiuses, the road were here, if you drive down the road, you're gonna see the raises and then the shafts and the blackouts, so. I mean, you're gonna take out the gutter line and continue the gutter lines.
Right.
Right, and that, that will remove people from parking their vehicles and R Vs and all that good stuff there. And also, uh, further to the north on Amber, where this crosses over to the sidewalk on the west side of Amber. Uh, the design there needs to be reflected to include all the, this, this. Other than that, I think, you know, that, that we understand the mix up. Uh, we understand the desire not to wanna go back to the state legislature. And uh, I think Tony is picking up an extra lot that he otherwise would have lost, and.
I think, yeah, there's no, no extra lot, that's the thing, we're just shifting it thirty feet over. You know, it's the same number of lots, it's just, you know, the same ninety foot wide lots as we approved previously, it's just taking this thirty foot strip from here and putting it here is why I need help.
Okay, the other thing I did do is, is uh, point out that this is a re-subdivision. And because of the uniqueness there, that we filed two sections at the same time. And both sections that were filed, section eight refers to this one lot, and section seven has been shifted now. Which is different than what was in the filed subdivision plan, so we are technically amending eight and seven.
Okay.
From the re-subdivision. It's, it's all reflected, it's all good on the drawing. Um, I'm just pointing that out as to why we're doing amendments to both sections.
Okay.
What we do is we put a note on the map, so when it goes into the county, it's amended and that just gets recorded with the prediction.
Can you check the wording on that?
Yes.
Okay. I thought it was a, oh, error there.
Yeah, there was a little, I think it was E or F or whatever, E.
Yes.
Hey, you all, Ron?
No.
Dan?
Uh, could you talk about the changes in eight nine? I know you said there wasn't, but I know that there is.
Yeah, damn it, man. He did.
It's part of this, I mean, you, you might, yeah, the reflections are in these, what was the, the eddies are in.
The, the, the storms were.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Well, there was a storm sword, right? That's another story, we go back to section six north. When six north got stubbed to section eight. I make this easy.
I make this easy. So what he's referring to is in section eight, so this is the end of section six north. So it was stubbed to continue on Ivory Drive in section eight. Our genie came along, everything was fine, they put in their conduits, the road crossing, they put conduits, and then they run their pipes under the road and they stub it out beforehand, where they run this, when they find it, get the electric guys and the teleport guys to come and run the pipes through, they put their conduits through here. And instead of coming around the backside, they went straight across here. Well, lo and behold, when they did that, it was in line with the storm bike. There's a twelve inch storm sword at the same depth as the conduits. And they didn't find that out until they put the pipe there. When they did that, they called up with the date, we got a cap line. The conduits and electric line, which are already in servicing all these houses in section six, they're all activated, you know, they just went on the very way. And the stump for the storm was just short of that, and they just continued out in the way. So discussion began, in fact, I think Frank and Ronnie were helpful in the solution. Psychiatric for A and E was to, he was talking about putting in a three by three box. So the storm bike is there, would be at a certain elevation, and then take and put up a box and lift it up and come out. The conduits are right at the same elevation, so enough to get a structure, tie an existing bike to the structure, and then come out of the box with a pipe just over top of the conduits, maintaining the separation distance from the electric, and continue on your way. Now, obviously, the grades up are great to do that. The town says they want a four foot manhole, so we changed it to a four foot manhole barrel, and basically did the same thing, but we used the four footers instead of a three by three box. So that continued on, so we had to change the storm, we basically stormed to the same location, it stops right here. So there's two lengths of pipes, and what we did was adjust that and bring that length of pipe up, and then continued on. Obviously, gives a storm sword for the homes, and then we have one set of catch bases so they're tied in by. So that was the change in A and E section.
So just so the boards are aware, that was a staff change, but since we were doing an amendment, I wanted it reflected in these plans, so that when we sign them, those changes will be fine.
Yeah. But that's real files and everything you're trying to do.
It has already been installed. I mean, like I said, this was a time sensitive thing, so this was discussed with all our staff, and we gave approvals with engineering, they put on it, and, but again, this is a catch-up, because we're doing seven and, and it was submitted together, so this was a good opportunity to take care of everything.
Good job.
How much do you want that over?
Oh, much, eighteen inches.
Go to the air until we, yeah.
We just had to get a clearance over that to Amber.
So that's all I got.
Okay. So do you have a question on that one?
Make a comment in the first. I was just curious, because obviously it's going to have standing water.
Eighteen inches, right?
And back up.
Upstream, we're eighteen inches, however, whatever that slope is, which is a condition.
Okay, not a good word. We maintain, you know, the slope on the new bike, and like I said, it's got a box basically comes in, does a little vertical drop, and then goes straight out and all fits down.
Oh, so the, the existing jump is upstream, not downstream.
Correct.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I can step up.
Yeah, no, 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 the existing bike will sit low, right, and it's at the box.
That makes more sense.
Yeah, very well done.
Anything else, Dan?
I'm good.
Highway.
If you need to go back to the first page. When there's like a five, we're taking the radiuses off.
Right here?
Right. There's a sidewalk that goes between section five and section seven there.
Which direction?
Yeah. Okay, so there will be, that gutter will continue across there. There will be a crosswalk right there.
Correct.
There is a light right there at that, at the crosswalk.
I believe at section five? I'm not sure.
If not, when we, because there is one, right?
I like to see the crosswalks, like.
Isn't it going to get that? Yeah. I don't see what, we put, we, see, that's an intersection, no?
I mean, if it's, if it's stubbed down to section five.
It's going to be an intersection, I mean, we're.
It was going to be an intersection, right?
It was going to be, it's not an intersection now, so now it's going to be a crosswalk.
Right.
So my bold was that there's a light at that crosswalk, there's a light also back over there in section seven where it meets.
There, I moved the light right there.
I see there's one there, there should be one back in five as well at that crosswalk.
Over here?
No, north.
North, farther north.
Going north.
North is that way.
Yeah.
North is that way.
Where Ivory comes back to Amber, up above Walter.
Over here?
Yeah.
No.
Didn't have lights in section five or not?
There was no crosswalk there. I don't, I don't recall, it doesn't show on the drawing.
I'm referencing down below still.
Okay.
Right there where we're removing the radiuses. We are now going to put a sidewalk and crosswalk there. That used to be a road.
It was going to be where the radiuses were in.
So you want a light, that's basically if I want a light at that crosswalk.
That's how both of them.
And then you go over to where it beats seven, I'd like a light there.
Yeah.
And then also, that cross, that sidewalk runs in there.
Got it.
And then, as Ron said, there was, in the discussion of changing this stuff around, slipping that locks down, there was trees in that conversation along the, where we pulled the road between five and seven, and also where we went between seven and up and around the pond.
Yeah, we had trees all the way through there.
Always, always discussion of additional trees.
So do we need to add a, or, or you guys are okay with all these?
I'm pretty sure the resolution was.
Yeah. Yeah, actually, we have one, two, three, four, there's a tree there, five, six, seven, eight trees along that sidewalk.
Right.
The street light here.
Is there any on the upper one?
We have a street light here, there's no street light over here.
Sure.
You will.
I don't think there's.
You will.
Over there.
I guess so. I may have to add one though.
Start with the good news.
Okay. Do you have anything else? Lance?
No, I don't, I don't have anything else, as included the review of section eight and changes, approve them, the other changes I agree to, I don't have additions.
Hey, Shanti? Adrian?
Yeah.
I'm okay with this one.
Okay, I don't have anything. You read the resolution, do you agree with the condition?
I agree.
One?
Yes, one. John said it last week.
Really? Yeah, it was out that twenty-six, right?
I don't know. It's well.
Yeah. Oh, that's the other one, that's right.
There's a lot of it.
There is a, yeah, it's pretty close to my yard, so I want to make sure that doesn't move into my yard.
The one to twenty-five, I believe, right now it's coming to my neighbor.
Well, he also said this to Tony by me.
Oh, good, he hasn't called me, so I guess that's good.
So then I got families out of there.
And it's been posted on the website, right? John? And it's been posted on the website too. Okay, you're good?
It's pretty standard.
Okay, it is pretty standard, okay. Advocates agree to the conditions, do I have someone to move to waive the reading and approve the resolution as presented with conditions? Moved by Adrian, second box. Doug, any other comments? Let's look at a roll call hopefully.
Nancy Malloy?
Hi.
David Vales?
Hi.
Abdi?
Hi.
Tim Delucia?
Hi.
And?
Hi. Okay, thank you very much. Let's see you again.
Yes, this is the final patient. August.
Not yet.
Oh, not yet. We got a minor coming up.
You've still got one section. It's August.
That's right, east, south.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, there is a.
There you go. Okay.
We worked on the orders, I forgot, there's one on three.
We'll continue to move on. BP zero-three-zero-two dash twenty-one, final site plan for Cynthia Cherichella. It's an amendment, this is final site plan amendment. So who do we have to speak on for that one?
My name is Mike Spawnable, I'm with Green Land Surveying.
Hello, Mike.
Hello. Previously, for the previous rendition of this, Mike Green represented our office, but I'm here today. So I believe Doug Dobler is on the line too, he is with Gerber Homes. So what, what we're requesting is to raise the house two and a half feet from where it was, from the elevation it was originally set at, in order to have a gravity drain from the basement of the house over across the property to Beaver Creek. I have contacted Army Corps of Engineers, they have verbally said that they have no jurisdiction. I have been trying to get a letter from them and have not had any luck. I believe I've called him four times. We are also talking with New York State DEC, and I've been, I don't want to say pushed down the road, but everybody's been telling me to, oh, no, try this person, see what they think. I talked to Luke Scannell, he was the one I probably got the most information from. He said I may need an Article fifteen permit, but he wasn't sure, and he sent me to permits department, I believe. I have yet to hear from them. I have contacted, well, I called back Luke and said that I didn't get anywhere with these people, they never called me back. So he contacted them, he apologized, he contacted them again, and gave me the name of the person to speak with, and I've tried to contact them two times since then, and have yet to get any direction on whether or not this gravity drain from the basement is, is allowed to discharge to Beaver Creek. So that's my, other than that, everything is the same. The house placement is the exact same place, the driveway, the location of the driveway, the utilities. The only thing we were requesting is a gravity drain from the basement, that's the only thing that's changed.
Okay, we'll turn it over to staff. Ron?
Yeah, basically, the biggest issue that I'm aware of that we had with this project was previously we put a condition that prior to the issuance of the C O, all easements that were identified as being necessary had to be filed with the county clerk's office and with the town.
Correct.
That was several months ago, and the construction inspector brought to my attention the fact that they were not getting anywhere with this. So you and I had had a conversation, we understood that it was not going to go anywhere tonight if there wasn't some progress being made, at which time I took it upon myself to call Gary Fuller, Cynthia's father, and knowing Gary, he got right on it. And last week, the town did receive draft documents, which, according to Matt Hyman this morning, they came in on Friday, Monday was holiday, he's up to his eyeballs in alligators today, he didn't have a chance to review them, but he's encouraged for the fact that there is something happening. I think we need to make it clear that nothing's going to happen until the easements are filed, and you may want to consider changing the issuance of the C of significantly of occupancy to that of a building permit, at least so that we know that the documents have been prepared. Matt has reviewed them and has sent them on to Jeff Pratt for filing. I mean, this, according to the lady I talked to at the attorney's office, said it fell through the cracks. Well, that's the whole purpose of doing a site plan, is to seal up those cracks.
Okay.
That's where we're at.
Okay, Dan?
All right, yeah, I have two issues, one of them were easements, which I think Ron covered completely. The other one is, I will talk on behalf of the stormwater, this is a gravity drain that they're proposing from the basement, that's discharging directly into Beaver Creek, Beaver Creek, thank you Lance, which I had talked to Luke from DEC as well, and it appears, from my understanding, that if they are going to discharge directly into the creek, they would need the Article fifteen permit from DEC, that they decide to, which is harder to route from my understanding. The other options have told me would be to bring that discharge back, so it's not discharging directly into the creek, but discharging in the yard area, and then have some of the yard to absorb that discharge before it hit the creek. And also, this discharge line, from my understanding, has a backup some pump to it as well, even though it's supposed to be gravity, there is a secondary means to grab the other one.
So what law?
For sure. So, but the biggest change tonight is the elevations, they are moving the house higher so that they could do this by gravity. And I'm sure Lance is going to talk a little bit more about this as well, but those were my conversations with DEC.
Okay. Highway?
My only concern I want to express there is in draining a basement directly to that creek, on a rainy day, that creek will rise, and I'm exaggerating, that creek will come up ten feet plus, and run to the outside to the bank, ten to twelve feet, and my concern would be if they run all the way directly to the creek, would be surcharged back to the facility, back to the home.
Certainly could do that, even if they dump it into the yard, could still do that.
Absolutely.
Hey, Lance, I'm the engineer here.
Yeah, I guess from our standpoint, I think the big thing that's captured in your commission of approval was that prior to issuing of a permit from the town, that we would require an approval or a permit from DEC Army Corps regarding the discharge directly to Beaver Creek. I think that's first and foremost, that's where it's like, that's what we're covering in that aspect. I would, I would suggest, and I'm sure Mike in his team have looked at it, but I'm suggesting they cut that drainage pipe back and have it cut short of the creek, eliminate the need of the permit, if possible. I know they're dealing with grading and they got to make it work, but you're already raising the house, and there's only the, I'll give it a little bit more to make sure you've got enough flow. Eliminate the need of giving up permit and having that direct discharge would save us a lot of issues, connection.
Okay, Shanti? So I'm sure you would love this.
So to get it out of the creek, you discharge, they're basically going to have to dump it into a ditch that goes into the creek. So does DEC realize that when they're saying, you know, just bring it back, because I don't want a ditch.
DEC had the original plans, the original plans just showed that discharge being into the docks.
All right. So not necessarily ditched in the yard, but into the yard?
Oh, she's low over land, but I know what Shanti's saying.
Which is different than what we have got, so now we have a little bit of a ditch going.
Right now, it's, right now, it's at the top of the bank of the creek.
Yeah, if they pull it back, they're going to have to cut swell wherever they pull it back.
I think pulling it back, starting to dam, let it go. I don't know if they got enough, you know, the elevation's rising, so I don't know if they got enough to get that to work.
I don't know if I. Yeah, they, I've got no problem with the plans, I mean, they're going to have to work the drainage out with the DEC. I mean, I would be worried also about rising levels of the creek and pushing water back. I mean, it. I mean, they can put check valves on there.
But somehow, but it's only going to get you so far.
Yeah. I don't, I wouldn't like relying on a check valve.
Me neither. Anyway, so, no, I've got nothing right on there. Okay, Adrian.
I mean, I would say it's probably better to pull it back off Beaver Creek, in my opinion, just because I don't, if the creek overflows like down the same or something, I just don't think they want the house flooded. So I mean, I'd rather see it back farther and I go across the land first to absorb or into a catch basin or something. I don't know. You know, I guess whatever route that I jump through, I'm okay with it.
Okay, Doug?
No, I mean, to me, it's an engineering exercise.
Yeah, it is.
But I mean, as far as raising the house, I mean, that's what I'm certainly trying to do, but I mean, it's a big recipe to play. Especially that that water rises and now you're at nowhere for that water to discharge if you're building up your basement, because that pipe's surcharged.
Yep.
So again, it's, to me, that part is an engineering exercise you need to work through and be comfortable with the design.
Would there be any issue, there's no issue with any of our utilities if it did back up in there and flooded the basement and did whatever?
Well, anytime we get a flooded basement, I mean, utilities are never in a good situation.
Right.
No, I don't think that you're looking at whether we're going to flood or sewer or anything.
Okay, so now, okay, Tim?
Well, I'm just wondering if we should give a final site plan prior to receiving that permit that sounds like it's required. So I, I'm not sure if we should table this until another meeting.
The requirement is that they have this Article 15 permit before the final site plan is signed. So we approved it, but we cannot sign the final site plan until that Article 15 has been issued by New York State Environmental Conservation. So.
Okay.
So there's that requirement. And then, so you know, I'm going to propose that number three and four, instead of saying prior to issuance of C O, I'm going to say prior to issuance of building permit. So we ensure we get the easements in and get those taken care of. So anything else, Tim?
No, I agree with you, Ed.
Okay, so the resolution has conditions. We're going to change three and four to say building permit as opposed to C O. Adrian.
If they figure out that they don't need this Article 15 or whatever, that permit 15, sorry, then the plans come back or if they shorten the pipe, like I said, they shorten the pipe and they're dumping it in the yard. We're all okay with that?
I would like the permission from the board if that's the decision they do, that I get a review from DEC. I think it's all there, okay with that? And if the meeting's okay, they'll allow the site plan to be used.
I agree.
I agree with that.
If they think it's better to go short and go across the yard or collect some different way to go to Beaver Creek, I don't feel like these come back to us. I'm okay if you've got, like, those two things, if you've got those all dotted, that we're okay to. That you're okay to do those and keep the plan going forward without trying to put it back on the agenda.
So with that in mind, we'll allow those to.
We all agree to that. I don't have a problem with it.
That's why I wanted that before you did that.
That's fine. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The resolution says that either an Article 15 permit or drawing design.
Okay, yeah, it does say that.
Well, I'm going to require that a DEC review.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, Mike, so we have the resolution with conditions. I assume you've read those. We've changed three and four to say building permit instead of C O. Are you okay with the changes and the conditions of approval?
I understand your changes to the condition, yes.
Okay, so you're.
May I ask? Yes, may I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Did you, did you say the Article 15 is required or?
No. No, it says Article 15 or the drawing design revised as to not discharge directly to Beaver Creek. I will say that that will be verified by staff to DEC to ensure if you do change it, that there's still not an Article 15 required.
Okay, I understand. I've had a horrible time getting ahold of somebody over there. I think part of it is with everybody working from home.
Yep.
And the messages getting through or getting to the right person is just a real pain in the butt.
Yeah, everybody's got those issues, and I know for sure that's the case. So you're okay with the conditions. So do we have someone to move to wait the reading and prove this resolution as presented with conditions with the changes to the conditions?
So moved by Chauncey.
Moved by Chauncey. Second by Adrian. Any other comment? Of course, take a roll call both, please.
I see Malloy.
Aye.
Adrian Vallas.
Aye.
Tim DeLucia.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you got your approval. Obviously, the long pole is going to be that Article 15 met or redesigning and then still getting DEC. Okay, let the record note that Chauncey has to leave the meeting. Okay, next item up. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next item. Go ahead. Okay, see you later. Okay, next item up. We've got no other board actions. We have open discussions. We have Director of Development, Ron.
Okay, I got a little list here that helps. The DRS, the Delaware Solar Corp, move decision as expected until at least June 1st. And the attorneys for the plaintiffs has an opportunity to respond to the town. There is a state legislation in the works to allow remote meetings to continue beyond COVID. And that has some implications, implications for people, especially with public hearings. And we have to watch that very carefully to see what state is saying is a requirement on the part of the advocate to be present at the meeting. DRS decommissioning plan, Dan, Lance, and I met last week, Wednesday afternoon with Sheldon and Mike Crosby. We went over things that we identified as still needing to be amended. Mike is working on that this week. He expects to have a draft by Friday. If he does have a draft by Friday, then Dan, Lance, and I will review it. And if it's acceptable to us, we'll forward it on to you for your next board meeting on the 16th.
Does he need to go back to DRS for their approval to change it? No?
This is our plan.
Okay.
Okay. And then if it's not, then it'll be the first meeting in July, July 7th. And we communicate that back to the attorneys at the office later today. Conferenza plan, we have tentatively originally scheduled a public information meeting to be held on the 15th of this month. But that's been put on hold because of the pressing need to have a steering committee meeting with those officials guiding burden and associates on the state of the 96th and 332 corridor study. There are some major issues there that we have objected to. Just so you know, some of them are unrealistic time periods for several hundreds of thousands of dollars of improvements to be made in years one through three and three through five without any identification of how that's going to happen. The burden is not on the back of town. And then the other thing that's missing from this, we feel, is the study consultants have not done anything to address with the state thruway authority their plans for improving the removal of the toll booths at exit 44. That's a cluster of Arizona one in the making. And you can add whatever edge that you want to to that. The special use permit for the auto wash. We've looked at that, and they understand that they are going to be looking at sidewalks along the Mcgensias. Pointed out to them. Lance has provided us a sidewalk master plan, which we've made some edits to. Don, you had a chance to look at that.
The layers?
No, the sidewalk master plan.
Oh, I agree.
Okay. It's showing some side, serious sidewalk improvements in the future, so to make that issue. Street map has been updated. One last cursory review today. I'm 99% there, I believe. You're going to see a much improved street map. Some of the sub areas are going to be larger to incorporate intersections that were cut off before. The zoning map has been revised, and we now have something to look at on the MSOD. One of the other things that I pointed out to Ed today in the Association of Towns newsletter, there is a article there on the need for municipalities to adopt regulations regarding G5 service.
G5? 5G.
5G, okay, dyslexic. And then the other thing that I had today was a New York Planting Federation webinar on solar, where the lady from NYSERDA was saying how great NYSERDA was in making all these efforts to improve solar energy and renewable energy and meet state guidelines and all that. And I followed that up with a question back then. You know, we followed your guidelines, we embellished them, we adopted them, and now we have a lawsuit. When is NYSERDA going to come to camp on behalf of the town to say to the courts, you know, this is part of the statewide mandate that we're working with? And the town is trying to provide positive direction to meet those mandates. What's NYSERDA going to support us? We'll see what kind of response we get.
So the answer was take it away and do it all at the state level?
Well, that's not the answer. So those are my activities for today.
Yeah, just to keep you busy, Ron.
Yeah.
Dan?
Well, Ron covered a lot, so I'm going to pick mine short. One of the projects that I told you that we were going to work on was file sharing for this board. Obviously, some of the files that we're trying to send to you guys are larger than emails can handle. Starting tomorrow, we are going to send you a link, which is a Microsoft Office link. It's something that town had already purchased with some of the other packages they had, so this was at no cost to town to do this. So, Ed, I believe you were sent the link today.
I did. I went in and checked it out, and it's interesting. Are we going to use sign-ins or is this just going to be a link?
There could be a link that's sent to.
Right, each of them.
To each of you, and at any point, we can de-identify that.
Okay.
So like, let's say that you love the board, I can go in and say that you wouldn't have access to that link.
But if I shared that with somebody else, they could get in.
Correct.
Until you shut it off.
Till I shut it off. But again, this link is only for board members.
Right.
And town staff members to access the files. There's two files in there. Well, there's actually three. There's one for the ZDA, and there's two for the planning board. One's going to be your first meeting, one's going to be your second. After that meeting passes, we're taking those files off and putting it in your next second meeting or your next first meeting of the month. So those files, names will never change, instead of trying to put the date of the, what, every meeting.
So like after 20, you, these would all go away and then, like, later this week, you, right, later this week, or something, pop the next one's update you had or when you get them?
As soon as we get them, they're going to go on there, and Sarah sort of sent out an email just saying, this project's been added for your first meeting or your second meeting, so that you know. But let's say that we carry over something from tonight, let's say the ice cream store, we carried over. We'll switch those, so it's sitting in that correct folder for your next meeting.
And there's an ability in there to bring it to screen width, so you can look at stuff. I just go through some different documents that were already there. Work pretty good. Work is pretty solid.
We're trying. Yeah, so I need a look from you guys.
Right.
Something's not working. It's something, I mean, we're going to try to stay with file names how we were before anyways, so hopefully it makes sense to you guys, but if it doesn't, let me know so that we can, right, get it to work.
Right, we may want to think in the future about having, for lack of better words, an archive folder where we take this stuff, instead of just getting rid of it, put it in an archive folder somewhere. We might have access to it to look at.
So obviously, we're not getting rid of it.
Oh, I see.
On our end of it, we're moving to maybe a location that you guys don't have.
Exactly.
But yes, that information's always available.
Yeah.
And here's the other great part about this. Let's say that we take it off of there and have you call me and say, hey, my board wants to look at what we did at Myers. Could you put it on? I can throw it up there.
Exactly.
If you guys have access within minutes.
Yeah.
To that, so.
Okay, cool.
So that's something that we wanted to share. Like I said, you should be seeing a link tomorrow to that file.
Yep.
So, it's cool. All right, thank you.
That's it?
That's all I'm going to talk.
Holy moly. Done.
Thought he was going to be shorter. I will be shorter, yeah. Highway, downhill maintenance continuing, town line is continuing. Parks by its whole continues, parks over Beaver Creek Park, and so forward, empty fields, graveyard, baseball diamonds, and other things, you know, positive forward progress.
Cool. I believe you can take the files off now.
Well, I'll pass a couple ways.
Lance?
Ron, I thought I told you earlier, we're working on a number of maps for the town. They need to give me 24 hours. I was hoping to get 24 hours of free time away from the maps, but already back.
What else you got to do?
I know, I know. That's it. So, no, we're working on them. I think it's a good deal. I'm glad that we're giving them updates.
Cool, thank you. We don't have any public, there's no public. Tim, what do you got?
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have to check the chat for you.
Oh, yeah, check the chat, huh?
Nobody has chatted with us, and you do have one caller online.
We do.
I will unmute for S, unmute for M.
I'm sorry, somebody online. Do we have, do you have any comments? Online, anybody want to make a comment?
I think you're good.
Okay, we're good. We'll go to Tim.
I, the only question I have is, I went to Burn Dairy again this past week and noticed it looked like they replaced trees, but they look like very small Charlie Brown trees, and wondering if that's acceptable.
Dan, was taking that. Well, I, I do have our zoning officer keeping a eye on it. They did say that they replaced some trees. I don't know if we have followed back up on that yet, but it's on our radar. We are also working with Empire Pipeline. It's the other one that we're working with to get their trees abstracted. So I do appreciate, Tim, the update, and I will keep following up on that.
Check out, check out that supposed dead bush at the Redfield Grove. That came from a resident over there who said.
So I got that, and I also have to double check the police property to make sure.
Yeah, check that, make sure that's home danger. Tim, how is that, how did Zoom work for you?
Works fine. The only thing I'm curious about is it looks like the image is reversed. Either that or I'm getting very old in my. Either that or I'm getting very old and my memory is bad.
Were you able to hear everybody pretty well?
Yeah, everything was fine.
Good.
The only, the only little quirk was, uh, whoever was on a telephone call in, when they were speaking, I had no image. I just saw this icon of a telephone and all, the whole room just wasn't there.
Yeah, there was no image for them, we didn't see it either.
Yeah, but I mean, I didn't see you folks either.
Oh, yeah, it goes to the speaker. Okay, that's how Zoom works. Yep, uh, I'm seeing the same thing on my tablet and I actually am the host off of my tablet at the moment, so I can answer chat and I've met people. Uh, Tim, I agree with you, the image is flipped. It's interesting, you, on our screens here, the image looks normal, uh, but on my tablet, it is flipped, so.
Okay. Well, I, that's good to hear because I thought maybe there was something wrong mentally with me.
We won't go into that.
I was waiting for that.
The jury's out on that one, buddy.
Okay.
All right, what do you got, bud? Nothing, Adrian.
Um, I got a couple, well, um, the whole town on ninety-six is being built. There by.
No, you're being played, Eric.
Yeah, one on eighty-six.
America's about to have it.
Yeah. It's been, uh, ninety-six.
It's being built.
One.
Yes.
Yeah. I don't remember, and it was, obviously this plan was approved like years ago, feels like now, but I don't remember that big ski thing on the front end of that building, it was there, sort of like their sign or something?
Yeah. Two-story front, it is a, like a apartment, kind of a sign.
No, I knew it had a two-story.
Yeah, that, that point is some sort of a logo or something that you guys proved, that happens approved. Your build sixteen.
Well, I said twenty, I didn't mean twenty years ago, I knew it was like ten or something.
Right, yeah, so everything's being built for.
Okay.
For drawing at the moment.
And Myers seems quiet or they?
Seems pretty quiet.
Talk about tonight, but, oh, two, one minute thing or something?
Yeah, yeah, no, I can go over real quick, uh, Myers is moving along well, uh, they are, they got in their application for foundation of their new building. Uh, so they're, they're looking to get mobilized on that. And the street speed along ninety-six seems to be pretty, pretty good.
Yes.
Uh, they are closing off the entrance to the Dollar Tree to their parking lot next week because they have some drainage to get put in. So they're gonna be using the McEntee Road entrance for a week and then they're gonna open it back up. Um, just because of safety concerns, we can't, we can't have old additions, but, uh, but then they're supposed to jump right back, they had some issues with the metering pit with, uh, Stewart that they were working with MRB on, uh, I think that those issues have been drastically, sizes, so they're gonna jump back to that uh, after they wrap up over by Dollar Tree and I think after the metering pits in, they can put the sidewalk in down that side of the road. So I mean, everything going in the direction, uh, I think that you're gonna see that there was a couple delays from their scheduling.
Did they come back realistically to us?
Your next meeting.
Oh, then now they never.
So at your next meeting, they are FERC this Friday, which we'll go into a little bit more detail of their scheduling. Um, like I said, there was a couple pickups along the way, which we anticipated might happen. Uh, the metering pit was one of them, so some things have been delayed a little bit.
Not already long, it wasn't.
Right, so, uh, but I, I definitely want to make sure that the board stays on top of them as well as us because I, I feel that we might have lost a little momentum, um, some of the.
Why did we actually sort of ask them?
So.
Okay.
They're busy with the project, we have.
All right. Um, I will say that I did, I have been doing the training, the monthly training from MRB and AIPAC.
I've been doing that too.
I've been doing that, it's worked out pretty well. Uh, you get your certificate via email and sign it and then give it to, yeah, turn them in. Uh, it's an hour each, uh, pretty good stuff, um, nice format.
Last one was very interesting.
Last little, yeah. Yeah, very interesting stuff, uh, certainly better than going in person. I will say, I do like that aspect of this whole progress thing is some things like that are, are a huge plus. Having, um, you know, the ability to have meetings online, stuff like that, I think that's a huge plus and I think, I'm glad we're, hopefully we'll keep it because it's a plus, so.
And so I won't, I'm on a way.
Okay.
I'm gonna have to call in.
That's up to you, that's up to you, let us know, but if you do right now, you gotta let Dan know because there's a location requirement that you have to put out.
I gotta do, how, how much in advance?
I think it's two weeks.
Oh, it's whenever, it's whenever they put out the agenda.
And so, I mean, the sooner you know about it, the quicker it comes.
I mean, I don't have time for both of them.
Well, I know, but we decided that you were gonna log in, uh, just so that we can put it on the agenda.
I was thinking they had one, uh, two.
You're going away on vacation. Oh, wait a. Yeah, exactly, go away on vacation, go away on vacation, certainly you deserve it.
For sure.
Yeah. Okay, anything else by anybody? Okay, most of the jerk by Adrian, second by Doug, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Good night.
I won't give a. I gotta take this back.